The cops don't get a day off.
Well.
Two to five parts.
No.
Probably not even pretend like it's a day off.
Maybe you.
Special.
Special. Was it really worth it?
It's her. Any interest?
Thank you.
You know, the last time I went.
You want to wait until they have time to screw up a lot before you name someone?
Wait till they're dead, very, very.
Yeah.
Running, but I'm okay. I don't think I've got committed till this day. What happened if he just touched it up?
It's all bad.
I gotta go by.
It's over, oh, we can't. No, it's gonna be in the events and it's a big, it's a big.
Hi, it's okay. We know. Somebody got some change. Pretty much, pretty good. Is Deas?
Yeah.
Very unrealistic.
And everybody who sits back there, he's like, I didn't touch her. She's like, do it. I mean, just making like, you know. But I just, I started with that. She didn't even tell.
I bet, I don't look down at four thirty this morning. If we make it here. Depends on how deep you get in the league. He'll find it. Good evening, sir. You praying or you, uh, calling, calling him this? Pinch hitter. What?
Oh, forget it. For times, Kennedy's. And they're all, this is our. Um, she's throwing, we were getting wood on, she's like, little outfit, full of things.
Had my stents earlier.
And she's like, oh, we're broken.
Are we changing anything that you?
I don't know, nothing. There's something, you want to change? We can eliminate action out of all the other.
Yes.
I was thinking to say, can we just call it?
Let's not have meeting tonight.
Uh, we should let David pray and then we should call it.
Okay.
So after he prays?
Are you gonna, are you calling it in a hitter or are you praying?
No, no, I gotta pray. I already told.
If I have.
If the guy has become a politician, so, hey, if I can't call him. You may have your preacher number. He's a priest.
Man, is he a politician if he was just a trustee? Not politician, trustee.
It's with the J C, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I'm at a Christian school. I'm an high school Christian girl.
Well, I don't think.
Do we get them canceled through the bike?
Hey, did you know, actually, uh, a finance.
I don't believe it does.
Well, I, for mine is, so I'm leaning on here. And then we have this approval, approval of accounts. From where?
You.
No, I'm just repaying me.
Okay, I understood that.
I'm over that. Like, the thing with Ron, when I said, it's a trial, I'm never sure. I am, I said, not too much of a great described. I'm there, I'm to that point, I, I want you to know.
Okay, well, we're ready. Is everybody ready?
The comments happen from my mouth.
Okay, Dave, you got your backup plan or plan or whatever it is?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. I call this regular meeting of the city commission to order. Rob, Shannon, roll call, please.
Mayor Roberts.
I'm here.
Mr. Trillo.
Here.
Mr. Gandy.
Here.
Mr. Bo.
Here.
Mr. White.
I'm here.
Wonderful, join us in our invocation. Let me see for heal.
You buy your hands and pray with me. Lord, I want to thank you this evening, Lord, for having us all gathered here this evening, Lord. I want to thank you also for us moving forward in the way we have been moving forward. We have been united in, in our cause, Lord, and getting everything back in order and, and, um, it shows, the results shows from the Parks and Recs all the way to the Fire Department, Lord, and, and also in, in our bookkeeping and. We pray, Lord, that we could continue to move forward, Lord. I know we'll have a lot of hiccups, but with your blessing, Lord, we can fine tune it and, and make it all look like it's supposed to look, Lord. Lord, I really appreciate it. Years back, I never thought we'd be, be at this point, but to me, I feel, I feel real grateful as well as, uh, positive about the outcome and I, and I just want to thank staff and I want you to bless them, Lord. And I want you to bless, uh, Police Department, the Fire Department and all our staff, Lord. They have just worked hard, Lord, and I want, thank you for giving us all the opportunity to have all these faces here with us, Lord. And I just, once again, when I say thank you, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. Join us in the pledge, please.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of our friendship among united cultures.
Maybe see. Mr. Key.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, welcome everyone that's here tonight and tell them what a privilege it is. This is the first time Commissioner Trillo hasn't had a pinch hitter in quite a while and it was very well done, so. I would want to say that first of all. Second of all, um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Okay, we have motion to approve the, uh, agenda as written and submitted. Any changes, any omissions or any discussion? Hearing them, Shannon.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
Commissioner Trillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for considerations of the minutes of August eleventh, twenty twenty-five and August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, motion second for the adoption of the minutes. Are there any corrections? Are there any additions or is, is there any further discussion? Hearing them. Shannon.
Commissioner Trillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Miss Stafford for mission.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, I have several resolutions that will require all of your signatures that can be here, financials.
Y'all can't leave at the end of the meeting, do we?
What?
That's why I lose documents.
But Mr. Fiera was gonna make sure you stay.
Okay.
All right. All right. All right, that's item number one. Is that it?
That's it.
No, no announcements or anything?
Well, um, tomorrow is.
Tomorrow is the day.
Friday day.
Yes.
Tomorrow's interesting, running, good courthouse, tomorrow at nine to five.
Okay. County clerk's office? Just walk in county clerk's office, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
It's a new, we've never done this before, so. All right, sounds good. And they will, they will tell you what to do at that point. All right, thank you. Welcome back, Ms. Veronica.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we've missed you the last couple or so.
Yes, so I, um, actually don't have anything with the exception of our, um, recruiting numbers are good, um, and we have.
Our hiring numbers good.
We're working on that.
Okay, all right, all right.
They are, we aren't losing as many as we're making, so that's, they're all replacement heads, so not adding any new heads, we're just replacing bodies that have left, so. About three positions at the current time right now, so.
Okay, that's good news. Anything further?
Um, that's it, thank you.
All right, questions, anyone? Amen. All right, Chief, how are you this evening?
Awesome. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, our Leavington staff for the month of July, with thirteen officers, we had four hundred and sixty-seven self-initiated calls and one thousand ninety-five incident responses with a hundred and thirteen citations, thirty arrests. And the Leavington, the policy procedures through Lexi Pol is ongoing. We're probably, I'd say seventy percent finished with those and we're doing a review of our para and our benefits this time at the Police Department. And just a little, uh, I guess the first notice that the fifth annual law enforcement torch run family festival is scheduled at October the eleventh in Eunice at the Marshall Park. And construction of the Police Department is, it's underway, it's probably close to seventy-five percent completed. It's looking good. Nothing else, kind of, any questions?
Questions, Commissioner.
Well, you know what, I had, I had a question real quick. It's not even a question, it's just something I'm just thinking out loud. And Patrick, maybe, maybe tune in or. Have we ever, I mean, I, I always think about work, looking at different avenues when it involves fire and, and police because of the always having the in, people come checking in and checking out. And, um, you know, we talk about contracts, you know, what you guys do, contracts, what you guys hire on, but have we ever thought about, I mean, I don't even know if this is even possible, and I'm just not asking, ask it for an answer tonight, Patrick, it's just. Like even a ten ninety-nine, have we ever thought about just having a ten ninety-nine contract with somebody, that way they can get all their revenues, we don't pay no benefits, but they work under ten ninety-nine. I don't even know if that's even possible. But it's just a contract labor, police officer comes in, we sign a three-year contract, he's under ten ninety-nine, he just gets, he receives no benefits from us, he's under contract with us, but he gets, if it's forty-dollar rate per hour, that's what he gets, but he pays his own share and keep and so forth. Just something to think out loud because, you know, we just get this turnover and I'm always thinking, how in the hell can we combat this turnover because not, we know, we lose them from the local guys, from the Sheriff Department, anybody. I'll say, how, we can never compete with the Sheriff Department, we can never compete with HPD, so how, what other avenue can we pursue? And, and I was thinking about that the other day, I said, hell, I mean, if we just, but I don't even know if it's possible, I don't even know if the state would allow it.
Like, if any day we hire somebody, they do a, an LEA, get rid of the form, but actually, we're saying we're hiring them in Santa Fe knows they have a CADA roster of everybody that we employ. So they're certified through the state of Mexico. Um, we, we can't hire, but we can hire non-certified for a year, but that's gonna take a process of getting them trained, uh, knowing what we do, I mean, it's a good idea.
I think truthfully, it's more of a liability and the fact of our benefits is what draws most people in.
Yes.
But, you know, the, the thing about it is, understand the benefits and so forth, but can we afford the benefits? I mean, when I do the numbers, I, I see that we cannot afford the benefits and the benefits keep going up every year, not down, and it, to be competitive with other municipalities, it's getting to be outrageous to where a, a small town like us of twelve thousand, we can no longer afford it, you know, and, and I'm just. But I'm not, I'm not saying, let's do it, I'm just throwing something out there because I'm just trying to look for a different avenue to, to compete with.
When I asked the lady that's here, I said, is there any way to opt out for a year, these young kids, and she said, no, no. So.
But they also said we can hire them on a 401K if they never go to Peru. I'm sending my answers.
Somehow we need to look into that because like, you just, uh, ju, uh, because the only reason why I say, I mean, and I'm talking about mainly the new recruits, no, but, I mean, some people want to stay with their para because they're gonna transfer over, but I'm talking like a brand-new rookie. It's in his twenties, he wants the money to go buy a house and car, he don't want, he's not looking at P E R A, he's not looking at nothing until he's probably thirty, then he'll say, hey, you know what, I need to get me a retirement plan. But these little rookie guys, they're, they're out looking for fast cars and, and a home to buy and, and after you take away P E R and you take away everything, hell, they, they're, they're making ten dollars an hour instead of twenty dollars an hour. You know, so I'm just saying, how can we keep them here? And it's like, I'm just throwing this at you, I'm not saying, you know, I'm just saying, you know, something.
Well, due to the fact that he'd be like a contract hand and that we would be the only supplier, you wouldn't be able to do that, because he would be, have to work at several, he'd be, have to work at Tatum, he'd have to be working in Hobbs, he'd be working for different entities in that, that same timeframe, so due to the fact that he is only working for us, I don't think that would actually fly.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm saying, you know, I'm not too sure how it would work out, even if it could work out, but I'm just throwing an option out there or something to look at or maybe just pursue something.
I don't like traveling nurses, they're responsible for all their own benefits, yeah, they make fifty, sixty, whatever, but they pay for their own benefits.
But they're working for multiple different entities.
And they're not working for a state entity.
And they're not getting shot at. I'm just saying, that's a lot of.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Hopefully not, anyway.
I'm just saying, I mean.
So are we gonna have to cover all citizens in Leavington, is that what you're saying?
Maybe. I think to be a certified officer in the state of New Mexico, you have to be certified with a specific agency and take the open affirmation with that agency and that city.
And that's how it is with the M T's.
Okay, that's how it works, okay.
And that's how it is with the M T's, you have to be with, uh.
Can you report that to Santa Fe so they get on that roster?
Because if you look at the numbers, and I've been here a while and always say that, but you look at the numbers and, uh, I just don't see us affording it three years, four years from now, I just, I just can't see us affording it. Right now, if you average, and a lot of this comes from our G R T, uh, and I know, if you guys have little outside sources, but Police Department, for instance, it's mainly G R T that, that, that is the, that is the core where we pay our. If you, if you do the numbers, at the end of the year, our savings, what you calculated about nine twenty average, we're averaging about eight fifty, uh, per month, that adds up to about seventy, at the end of the year, that's about eight hundred and forty thousand. Uh, that don't even last for one month, that's if we had a good year, we didn't have to spend over our budget, for, at the end of the year, we've only benefited less than a month of revenue to put aside for the pre, for the next year. So you imagine if costs went up, which they are going up, still inflation, I just keep saying, I don't know how or when, it's coming soon as the day we can't afford, uh, police officers or, it's, it's coming, I mean.
On the average, medical benefits go up anywhere from eight to ten percent a year, and that's just industry standard. So if you look at the total compensation when it comes to medical insurance, this is why Hobbs and Eunice and Jow, they don't, they don't meet the ninety percent that the city of Leavington meets. So we do pay a, a bigger portion of our employees' benefits, this is what makes us, um, marketable at this point, because our salaries aren't what they pay, but our benefits match better than what Hobbs and Eunice and Jow pay. That's why we can still keep.
Luckily, by switching insurance carriers, you save twenty percent, um, less fiscal year, that adds up to about two hundred thousand. It's not a huge amount, but something. I just worry, I did.
I know Hobbs is, Hobbs is only paying, oh, about seventy-five percent of theirs, so we're paying ninety.
Paying, paying benefits are a city's biggest expense. Yeah, and, yeah, but everybody, everybody said, I mean, we just can't compete, I mean, the bottom line, can't compete with Hobbs, can't compete with the county, and I, I most likely can't go up on their races next year, or after their elections, they're gonna go up on there, because it most likely has to be one of their promises. I just, just throwing that out there, we just, we just, I don't know, I just, like I said, that was just something I thought about, I'm not saying this, it could work, but I just wanted everybody's opinion on it, that's all I got.
Yeah, we have fifteen applicants and we invited all of them to run this morning and only three showed up. They, they all passed that process, so they'll move on. Uh, Officer Soto tore his, uh, pec muscle, so he'll be out six months. Officer Gomez just had a baby, so she's looking her way back. And Officer Chacon has her doctor's appointment on the sixth, so hopefully she'll be back shortly after that. So, yeah, we have thirteen officers, but two of them are uncertified and three of them are out with injuries, so we're down to race.
And there's, that's half.
Yeah.
And just one other thing, and I, and this is towards it. And this is what I've told, um, I've spoken with Joe and a couple of people about, since wastewater and water are a separate entity from, from the city, how, how the finances work. I keep saying that, that they need to pay for one of our officers because we're out there, uh, doing security for them out in the field as well as this wastewater, is there somehow the state would allow us to, to absorb security and, and be part of the budget, security and pay for an officer or two officers? Because that way we can draw from that, that pool to pay for two officers, and that, that's something to think about, that's all I got.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll think about it.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions for Chief? Hearing them. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Fire Chief.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commissioner, so one, my second out engine, which is my first out engine at Station Two, uh, we're gonna have to have some work done on it, right now we're quoted about a little over eighty-five hundred dollars. So it's a two thousand nine Freightliner, it's not old, but it's not new, so, uh, trying to keep them up and running. My tanker is at Sid and Martin's in Leavitt, um, and right now, its quote is approximately thirty-five thousand, forty thousand. So, but it is my only water supply and it's needing extensive repairs and some major part replacements, and it's a two thousand nine as well.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
What are we gonna do for backup for the hospital?
So right now we have to use the county, if the, we have a water line go down or something, we have supply water, we have to call the county, because right now what we're doing is, if we have a fire where we need water supply, we're calling either Knowles, Tatum, Maljamar and County. So all of those will be paid out of my state fire fund, so it's not out of city funds, it's out of the state fire fund. The Academy tested out last Friday, so we're still waiting on their results, um, hopefully they all did really well. And then all of our E M S students have started class, they started last week, so other than that, everything else has moved along, I have nothing else to report.
What's the expected, uh, repair time for your water?
For the tanker?
You gave us an.
I gave you the quote, we, right now they're still trying to find all the parts. Once they get parts and all that comes in, then they could give me a better idea. Right now, I'm just hoping to have it before grass fire season really hits.
That should be in two weeks if it gets.
Well, I, I'm, I'm expecting, you know, January through April is our worst when we get the real heavy winds. I've been spending all, a lot of time and a lot of, a lot of money on the grass trucks, getting everything ready, because I want to be prepared, I'd rather need it, have it, not need it, need it, not have it.
What's a new water truck?
New tank, it's a new grass truck, working good, but.
No, I, no, you're, the one that's down, uh, what's its replacement, what would it be in tow?
Oh, for the, so the engine, if you look at the engine, it's, you know, a new engine, if it's, you're looking seven hundred and fifty-two million, so I'm looking at eight thousand, the, the tanker, uh, to replace it, you're about five hundred and fifty thousand, and I'm looking at forty thousand for replacement, or just repairs.
Yes, sir.
So that's, they're expensive to upkeep.
They're expensive to begin with.
They're expensive to, again, with, they're expensive to buy, but they're expensive to upkeep as well. And the fact that they're, as old as they are, and this is the first real problems we've had out of them, I, I feel like we've been pretty blessed and.
They're pretty dev. How free, yeah, they are, yeah. Okay. Anything further, questions, other than the one I threw up? I hear none. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bo.
Well, thank you very much, uh, thank everybody for being here, we appreciate you, uh, taking time out of your schedule to come to the commission meeting. A couple of things, uh, down at the North End, Alberstons Project, it's coming along pretty good, looks like they're making a lot of headway. And I know, uh, we have a couple of projects at Lee County Electric, uh, going on also, the reason I bring that up is because we always talk about heads and beds, and I know from the construction company, we have people staying in hotels and, uh, RV parts, people that are doing work for us are also out there. And I appreciate that very much, that helps with our, uh, funding, with our projects, our G R Ts, and, uh, so, thank you all for that. Couple other things, uh, we went to, uh, the senior center and had lunch over there and it was good, and that leads me into my segue into my next. Had a couple of people over there ask me as far as with the veterans, as far as the banners, uh, my next-door neighbor, Patsy Cunningham, I don't know if you guys know her or not, a lot of people do, uh, nice young old, uh, nice young, young lady, she's gonna kick my butt for that. She asked me, uh, and I asked Ashawn Robinson, uh, these are a couple of questions, with your permission, I'd like to have them come up and I'd like to ask.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. Evening, Commissioner.
Welcome back.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
Patsy asked me, uh, her husband Archie, uh, Patsy and Archie are, uh, both veterans. And, uh, Archie also used to be the lead chief for the city of Leavington, uh, he is passed, but she asked as far as seeing about getting a banner for him. And I said that I would find out, that's why I asked you to come, and also I wanted to find out, I'd like to sponsor Archie. Patsy does a lot of, a lot of things for a lot of people, I mean, she's always baking, bringing food to everybody and that, and I said, she's a kind soul, so I'd like to sponsor and I wanted to put it out there so other people could hear. So if other people have ideas, wanting to get involved in this, if they could, so that's why I've asked you to come, if you could explain a little bit of that.
Yes, sir, um, thank you, Commissioner, uh, I know we all love updates, and I'm gonna be, this is probably the coolest update that I've had in a long time, um, we've started taking these applications and, um, oh my gosh, I don't need goosebumps, I was hearing stories, I got a story about a veteran which will come out. Um, World War II veteran that did a B twenty-nine bomber and did like forty-something missions all the way to Europe, Africa, uh, went down, was a POW, still hasn't been found, but they have a whole history of them about it. One of the things that we came to promise is we have a lot of these veterans that don't have photos, so I didn't think about that, that's a huge, it's a huge thing. Uh, we decided with the program, kind of hard to put a veteran on a banner without a photo, so we're gonna do a thing called Spotlight, on Facebook, uh, Lee County, and on the website, what we're gonna do is, once a week, we're gonna pick a veteran throughout the county and it's gonna be a whole story about them. And it's gonna spotlight, we're gonna spread it everywhere, and we want their story to be told, even if we don't have a photo, we're gonna find it, we're gonna tell about them. We also are gonna have a meeting with the museum coming up, uh, Leavington and Lee County Museum, and we're getting with them so we can get a lot more stories, a lot more information. I just can't wait to tell you all some of these stories, because my phone has been blowing up and it's, it's, it's amazing, I got veterans from Iraq, Afghanistan, all the way to World War II, um, some in Europe, some in Africa, um, I had a submarine story just a few days ago, um, it was awesome, but, uh, the update is, it's going really well. We are looking at doing November, we have our first meeting September third to vote and finalize everything, and, um, Veterans Day, we are looking at doing a ceremony, and I hope all you all show up. And Veterans Day, we are looking at doing a ceremony, and I hope all you all show up, you guys can show up. Um, we're looking at possibly at the Methodist Church to unveil the first banner and do a breakfast there. And maybe get the band and everybody participating. So sponsorship on top of that, we're working with sponsorship, we do have an account with the Chamber of Commerce is opening account for us. I'm gonna be a physical agent. Uh, hopefully this week we'll have um an account open so we can start getting sponsorship. We can still hand out the forms, but um uh, we can just, I just tell everybody, give me a few days before we can accept checks. Uh, other than that, I mean, the program is going very well, and we have a meeting with Hogs in the next few weeks too. And they're kind of already taking what we have here in Levington, saying, what do we do next? What do we all do? So um this is, this is our goal. We want Levington to be proud of the county. We want to show that this is why we're the capital, and it seems like everybody's following soon now. So, can I ask you a question, Commissioner?
As far as the applications, where do you get them from?
Uh, application, so if you go on Facebook, on the group, uh, there's a link provided and it'll take you to a website. And on the top left, it'll be like a little bar that says veteran banner. We also today, uh, after having the discussion with you and kind of figuring out, uh, the community here in the community, I downloaded some applications, I placed them at the library, the senior citizens. Um, and we're gonna see if I can put some at the Chamber of Commerce. What I'm gonna do is some of the older generation are having a hard time with technology, which is understandable. Um, so what we'll do is we're doing paperback, and I have some applications for you today, for you guys. But if it's okay with the commission, I would like to keep a few of the stack out there on the desk at City Hall too. Um, if that's okay, so we can tell the citizens to come in, grab one, and I'll give them directions. They can bring it back to the police department with Teresa Grady, or they can just email to us. We're just trying to make it easy as possible because a lot of citizens are getting confused with the technology. But we're gonna knock that out and we'll help them with that, so. The last thing is, we discussed after the twenty-two um veterans are picked this year, we're not ending it. So if you're the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, or twenty-fifth, we have a tracker list and you'll be number one, two, three next year, if that makes sense. So we're not, we don't want a veteran to be lost in the scramble, three years in a row not being picked. So even if you didn't get picked this year, there's a good chance next year and the year after. And then, you know, we'll we'll discuss more polls and what poll location next year in the future, so.
Sounds good. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
So other than that, uh, buy local, shop local, and eat local. Please help out our community, help out our businesses. We all need, we all need that, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Trey.
I just want to give a good shout out to Robert Bettis, Parks Director and every other director out there. I went out there Thursday, uh, played a little volleyball, and man, it was packed. Uh, even the splash pad was running, um, a lot of kids playing.
Is that a senior league you're playing in?
Yeah, yeah. I'm good, brother. No, and uh it was full, park was full, and and everybody sat playing soccer, uh, splash pad, like I said, was running, people at the, I mean, it was full, and uh it looked real nice, Robert. And uh I just wanted to give a good shout out to you and your team uh for doing a very great job. And uh the only thing, the only complaint I had was always a pat on the back and then the little relief is that uh, the volleyball court, it, the lighting's out a little bit out there.
Andrew, the lighting will come back into the large shelter because it's built to do it next week, uh, month, month and a half probably.
Okay.
Those are all tied in together with the basketball lights, the volleyball lights, they're all tied in together. Don't forget that, or everything else you're doing with the west coast.
Okay, that will let everybody know. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks for a while. Thanks for again.
Just tacky comments about the lighting. I thought he could tilt his head a little bit and be fine, but other than that, I don't have anything.
Could've done his part, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Fiero.
So I'm gonna pass on because I'm gonna be talking about.
You're gonna be talking in a little while, so, yes. All right, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, on that note, I'll keep it brief. Um, first off, the state-funded amphitheater project at Chaparral Park is almost complete. This is the smaller structure, which is the amphitheater, more in the center of the park. The larger structure, which is the pavilions in the final stages at the manufacturer. Next off, after May's record-breaking GRT number of one point two million, June's number broke that record coming in at one million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. This included a one-time retailer clawback by the city of forty-three thousand dollars. And as you can see there, we're kind of in uncharted territory in a good way, but may it continue. Um, next slide, please. As you can see, once again, retail and construction led the way. Um, and finally, we are in the process of hiring a second code enforcement officer with past experience, and they should be ready to go in the next few weeks. So let me give Laura some help.
Wow.
And I'll be happy to stand for any questions.
Okay, make a question, Commissioner. Commissioner Bow.
Just gonna ask David.
Yes, sir.
I know that you have these graphs for us to look at, and I was just wondering that for the uh sake of transparency, maybe putting them on our website so that the community can see them too.
Yes, sir.
Because I know we're pretty much the only ones here that get to see them and
Right.
I mean, the work that you put into it, it'd be good for people to see it also, I believe.
Yes, sir. Okay, we can start doing that. That's a good idea.
Any further questions? Here you go. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. You're pinch hitting tonight. All right.
So as many of you know, Crystal had a major operation last week.
Yes.
I spoke with her yesterday, and she's doing well. Operation didn't go as planned, but she's gonna have this week, she's gonna be out all this week to recover and do the necessary recovery time. Um, and she says hello.
Okay.
She's doing well. Um, the planning zone commission on the eleventh went well, and uh we have two resolutions here. I believe both the property owners are here. Uh, if you are, we're here. Yeah, thank you. Um, and so we will cover that. They approved the carport variance, given that the owner passes the state inspection for the carport. And they approved the amendment to the special abuse permit for two employees and up to twelve children following all state requirements and regulations.
Okay. Questions at this time? We'll probably have some discussion when we get to those particular, so. May have questions, you may not have anyway. Still be delighted. I do have a request. This came about last week sometime, I don't remember exactly. But it was on a previous approval, I think it was either the last commission meeting or the one previous, not not the special one included. But uh it was one we talked about, and it was stated that it was a three or three to six inch overhang, but then we, in further discussions, when I re-signed it, it turned out, or well, it appeared to be a six foot overhang. Um, I know Crystal's out, but whatever, and can you just research that, clarify it for us? Um, anyway, it just, either if it is three to six inches, then then we're good, we move on. It's just that if it's considerably more than that, I think we need to maybe revisit that, even though we've already passed it and whatever. So uh if you'll just report back and then we'll find the appropriate uh avenue to look at. Thank you. I appreciate that. Other than that, that's all I have at this point. Counselor?
Mayor, Commissioners, don't have anything new? Got a few comments uh anticipating during the non-action item discussion.
Okay.
Uh, other than that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions? All right, here you go. And we'll be moving on. This brings us to our public comment time. Uh, if anyone here has something you would like to address to the commission, please step forward to the podium. Please announce your name. Uh, give us three minutes or less if you'd like to comment to us. And uh if there's questions or whatever, the council, the commission will so indicate. Podium is open, and it comes EDC.
Good afternoon. Evelyn Higgin, Secretary of Director for Levington EDC. Just to add a little bit to the retail um pie that you saw earlier, just for full transparency, we wanted to let you know that the Wendy's site is almost complete. The current developer that is working on, that owns that, is putting in the utilities that was part of the contracts prior to Wendy's taking over. So I know that the utilities are currently being installed now. We're hoping to have it complete in September, and once it's done in September, then it will be fully transferred over to the Wendy's Corporation, and then they will begin the building. So we're hoping to have a grand opening for, which is the Albertson's Market, and also as for Wendy's. We're hoping to do a groundbreaking for the Wendy's prior to getting, start the construction, but we will let everyone know what days they choose. But just wanted to give you an overview on that because, I mean, everybody can see all the progress that's going on in the north end of town. And so just so you know, the Wendy's going at the same time. Um, the shopping center, that will not be constructed until the summer of twenty twenty-six, and we're currently trying to help them fill the spots. I mean, as of right now, there's ten thousand square feet that will be built out there. Um, and so we could potentially could have five tenants out there, we could have three. It just really depends what size tenants are looking for. And we could have ten if they're looking for one thousand square feet shops. Or we could have five. It just really depends, but we're currently working with the owner now to try to find and fill those spots.
And when you say shopping center, you don't mean the Albertsons?
Not the Albertsons, no. So if, I mean, you see where the Albertsons is now. The Wendy's will be located right next door to what is the Family Dollar there now, and the shopping center will be built behind the Wendy's. So you'll, you see the entries that are out there, so you'll see one entry, they will go into Wendy's, you'll have one that goes straight. That's where the shopping center, and then you'll have the one that turns to your left or to your right. Um, and that one is the one that goes into the Albertsons.
Are we still looking at December more or less?
That's the plan. I mean, the plan is, as of right now, everything's on target. We haven't, we've run into about two or three snags, but they were bad. It was stuff that was fixable. We, first snag was when we thought we had a current line going through the property. Come to find out, that line was completely dead, but it was never taken out. And then we did have another issue where we had the engineers. The engineers for the Albertsons and the engineers for the Wendy's are actually two different people. And so their plans actually didn't align correctly, but we were able to figure it out. And I think we were able to cut just a small piece off of the retention pond and to make it work. Other than that, we haven't had much, and we just, thank God that, you know, when all the rain and everything was going on, we thought that was gonna set us back, but it didn't due to the fact that there we had port foundation. In going vertical was actually gonna be a lot easier than putting in a foundation.
Now, you were saying with the Wendy's September, you did say September first, right?
No, September in general. Because if I say September first and then it don't happen, I already know how I'm gonna end my lesson.
We got the paper here, and I wanted to quote you on that.
September, and then if it doesn't happen September, I'm gonna say, I didn't say twenty twenty-five, it was twenty twenty-six. I've learned. I've learned. After seven, two years, I've learned.
My question's always what year, you know?
See, it's kind of like the street project. It sounds like it's done in April, but we didn't say what year in April, you know, so.
True, true.
So we just know that we're actively trying, we're being as aggressive as we possibly can to try to recruit and fill. And I mean, uh, we can all see it, and we definitely can see the progress.
They're definitely making headway big time over there.
Absolutely. It looks really good. It's like a big change from a day or two, and you'll notice that, you know, walls are, it's now completely closed. Now they're working on the interior, but as of right now, everything's on track. And we're hoping to hopefully be open by the holidays, if we're running. But they do have till March of twenty twenty-six to be completely open. Have their COs and open to the public in March, but their plan is to hopefully be open by the holidays.
Yeah, every time I go past, I'm hoping I see front doors on the plant.
Any questions for me when it comes to unique type of development in Apple?
I have a question. Uh, this is completely unrelated to what you just.
Oh, okay.
While you're here, uh, as you know, you were present. Uh, last Thursday, we had pretty much an all-day uh talk with the EDD of New Mexico. Uh, Mr. Mr. Roper was here and he, and he basically gave kind of uh LITA one oh one. I mean, I don't know, kind of, but if it would be possible uh with a better understanding now, uh, if you could maybe put that into and maybe even call on his assistants if so needed to go over the purpose and the use of LITA funds with all of the different types of project participation agreements and everything else that was presented. I think that would give the commission and public, anyone that has an interest, a little more information on what it can be used for and everything else. Because I know we all learned some things.
We did.
In that particular day.
So it's good. We we learned good, but just know, we're actually, we've done a great job when it comes to, when we're using LITA, with even with like the project with the Albertsons. We, everyone hesitated because we really didn't know if we could help until but come to find out, they gave reassurance that that was actually a great call, that's exactly what it was meant for, and that's what the use is. We, we, I'll put something together um and bring it back and disperse it between all of you so you can actually see it. The perk about that is that we actually recorded the full meeting, so well, if anybody would like to look at the meeting, we'd be more than happy to share that video with you, but we did record that full meeting just for FYI, just in case we miss something and we're able to go back. But other than that, we did get kudos. We said that City of Levington, even Mark Roper mentioned, you know, that City of Levington was looking really good based off of the last time he was here. He was here, he said, a decade ago, a decade ago. He used to actually be my regional rep. And he said Levington has actually changed since the last time he was here, and it was looking really good. So I will definitely get that together and send it your way. Sure.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, I know that was more than three minutes.
Sorry.
No, not you. No, our involvement is what caused it, so. Uh, anyway, so we're still in public comment. Anyone that would like to come forward, please go ahead and stand up. Let's, if not, then Mr. Gandy's gonna go one, two, three, move on.
I already said one, two, three, whenever we're still talking.
Oh, okay. Yeah, right. Okay, all right, well, no one's jumped up, so we're gonna be moving on. Uh, brings us to our non-action items, and I'm assuming Mr. Miranda, you're going to take the lead here.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, there's no easy way to do this, uh, but the time has come where we might wanna take a look at the nineteen ninety-two discharge agreement between the city and HF Sinclair Navajo. Um, I have a copy here if anyone wishes to see it. It's, it's, it reads a little convoluted, but my take of this contract is it's been expired since twenty twelve. So we have to revisit it. Uh, for the record, right off the top, I want to say that HF Sinclair Navajo is a great community partner. They pay their bills on time, and without speaking for them, I think they agree that the time has come to revisit this contract. Also, I'll add that we did revise their freshwater contract uh about six months ago, and that actually resulted in a cost savings to them. This probably won't, uh, but I'm just gonna, it'll probably be about thirty seconds before everybody's eyes blaze over. But there's no easy way to do it, and I didn't spice it up with charts or anything else. Um, so the nineteen ninety-two agreement, two points. We think it expired in twenty twelve, and just bear with me because there's conversions here and it's very arcane. Um, the contract with Navajo assumes an average flow rate of between ninety and a hundred and sixteen gallons per minute, which would add up to three thousand to thirty-five hundred max barrels per day, as we all know, barrel equals forty-two gallons. Thus, that translates into a hundred and forty-seven thousand gallons per day at the maximum. You could call that their flat rate. Um, for whatever reason, the contract was designed to be billable over a three-month period. So the structure of the contract, as I said, the flat rate assumes one hundred and forty-seven thousand gallons a day. It calls for a fee of a hundred and fifty dollars a day or four hundred, four thousand five hundred per month. That's the flat fee. For anything above a hundred and forty-seven thousand gallons per day, a rate of point oh two five per barrel will be charged by the city. Since there are forty-two gallons in that barrel, this translates to this very small number per gallon, but we have to, we have to convert it. So then then. So then convert it, that's per gallon, but since we build in thousands of gallons, we have to take a couple of decimal, well, three decimal places off of this to convert it into excess price per thousand gallons, which translates into about 60 cents for every thousand gallons in excess of the 3,500 barrels. So what do they send us? What do they send down the line to our wastewater treatment plant? It averages 7.15 million gallons per month.
Can you state where that average came from?
I took the monthly data from all of last calendar year and averaged it out. I also have this month, this year's data from January to June, and it's, it's similar. Some months it's five and a half, some months it's nine, but it averages around seven, eight.
This is a meter that is located on their
Property, which they read themselves and give to us.
Right, just kind of letting everyone know where the data comes from.
Right. So the 7.15 million gallons per month translates into 238,333 gallons per day. But of that, only the first 147,000 gallons is covered under the flat rate. So translating 7.15 million gallons per month translates to 85.8 million gallons of effluent sent to our wastewater treatment plant per year. Stay with me. Stay with me. All right, so let's, let's drill deeper here. So we said, we established that Navajo sends us on average 7.15 million gallons per month. We established that the flat rate is 147,000 gallons per day, 150 bucks a day. That's 4.4 million gallons per month that are covered under the flat fee, right? Because there's two pricing components. So what's the excess, right, over the flat fee? Approximately 2.7 million gallons excess per month are subject to the excess billing rate of 60 cents per thousand gallons, as we covered, we established before. So this translates into 32.8 million excess gallons per year, divided by 60 cents per thousand gallons equals $19,000 over the flat rate of 4,500 per month. So that gets us, and added to 54,000 per year, gets us to basically, and Kevin, we confirmed this today, basically for effluent, we bill Navajo about $132,000 a year. Okay, let's look at the wastewater treatment plant. In 2024, the Lovington wastewater treatment plant processes an average of 27.4 million gallons per month or 912,000 gallons per day. As briefly stated, Navajo produces an average of 7.15 million gallons per month. Thus, the average, Navajo's effluent makes up 26% of the water processed by the plant. Let's analyze the discharge agreement versus the standard commercial rates. There are no industrial rates for effluent water, there's only residential and commercial. So our standard commercial rate for wastewater, first 5,000 gallons is $49.18 per month, which is .009 cents per gallon if you translate that flat rate. And then, more importantly, for what comes after 5,000, it's a dollar 10 for every thousand gallons. So if you look at the Navajo 1992 contract, the first 4.4, 4,410,000 gallons were 4,500. If you convert that, it's .001 cent per gallon and 60 cents for every thousand gallons thereafter. So you can see that the difference for the flat rate is pretty striking. And then the difference for the excess is about half the standard commercial rate. And, you know, I could be wrong on some of these calculations, but I've checked this about 20 times and I've had Kevin look at it, he's a lot smarter than I am. So if anyone fact checks me and we, I'll retract it, but I'm pretty confident in these numbers. So let's look at, what is the impact to our plant, right? So last fiscal year, our budget for the wastewater treatment plant was $3.8 million. Let's look at it the other way. So if Navajo's percentage of what goes through that plant is 26%, how does that translate into our budget? If you look at it, what it represents hypothetically, it's a little bit, it represents almost a million dollars of the budget for the plant. So since the estimated effluent revenue paid for Navajo is $132,000 a year, theoretically, there's a deficit of $865,000 to the cost of running the plant. I'll add to that. So what's not on the slide is if we applied the standard commercial rates to Navajo based upon their effluent volume, we would be billing them $943,800 per year. Now, I'm not saying that we should go that route. They're a big customer, they're a special customer, it's gonna be up to us and them to negotiate that. That would represent an increase of their wastewater billing of over $800,000 a year. To contrast that, when we revised the freshwater contract, it represented a savings to them of $140,000 a year. So that would offset this increase somewhat, but not entirely. So that's kind of where we stand. It's a very hard contract, I don't know why it was put together this way, but, and I think Patrick has some history on it too, but I'll be happy to stand for any questions. It's just kind of a presentation to show you where we are in terms of the billing. As we all know, the wastewater treatment plant needs a lot of work, probably north of $15 million. And a lot of the volume comes from Navajo.
Question. Mr. Gandy.
What other, I mean, because their effluent water is different than the effluent water that comes from our houses. Is there any type of special treatment that we're having to do to compensate for that non-typical sewage water?
I've heard, I've heard a couple varying comments on that. I'm told they don't treat the water especially that comes down to us. There is a provision in our ordinance for wastewater for commercial that actually adds on a cost for industrial waste, but it's based on total solids. Kevin and I looked at it, it's at the, it's the last two pages of your packet there. It's a very complex formula, we don't think it's ever been applied, but if anything, it would add to their doing.
But like, do we have to buy a certain chemical to handle their water that we wouldn't have to if it was just?
Mr. Perez, I think you're gonna probably be needed in this conversation, so.
Yeah, that was, just to, what Ms. White was saying, is it used for the cooling tower or is it used to transport fluid, like oil? Sometimes you use water and oil to transfer.
We don't buy any, we don't do anything special for it, I mean, other than, you know, extra chlorine, you know, bleach, depending on what's coming in at times. Sometimes you just go with what's air, if it comes in really hot sometime, you gotta do extra chlorine, you gotta do, there's just extras. You can't just put the finger on one thing and say, this is what we're doing, it can be lots of different things.
But what are, what are they, Robert, what are they specifically used it for? For their cooling towers?
I think so.
That's what I'm thinking, I think that's, but if they're using it to transfer fluid, then, then we're getting something else, but if it's just for cooling.
At the time, if we get those pigs that come in through the lines, you know, big pigs for stuff, you know, you get five or six of those. We don't know what exactly, some months it comes in really hot on everything and then sometimes it doesn't. Every once in a while it comes in really, when nitrous is high, everything is high. You know, we go to the lab, everything comes in high, so we've got, you know, extra chlorine, ammonia, bleach, whatever it is, we have to put it there, make it, make it work.
It's, it's kind of hard because does their line come in right in front of the plant there or where, where does it feed into?
And it's, you can always tell when there's something coming in because everything acts, you know, everything acts crazy, you know, the alarms, they come in a little bit hotter, that, that comes in. Chlorine is now low, you gotta add extra. I mean, I think we're going 12 liters of chlorine is what we use probably every three weeks, that's like $6,000.
And that's chlorine.
And just chlorine gas, you know, when it, stuff comes in and not, we know when it's coming from somewhere else. I mean, it's just after a minute of while, you know what's coming in, what's, what's not from where. When it starts acting that way, we double it.
Now, when that water's coming in, you're saying you're using like $6,000. Is that coming in just from that plant itself or is that everything?
It's from everywhere, but when it comes in harder, the water, or if it's coming in, we have to double the chlorine, we have to double the.
Is there any way in knowing that it's just from them?
Not without, we've done some tests, sampling stuff, whenever stuff comes in, we put some samples out, take it to the lab, and it shows stuff different than what usually comes in from that line.
And they send us copies of their lab reports every quarter.
Because I'm just saying, if we're having to use more chemicals on what they're discharging, then we could have put that cost of the chemical towards that too. But if you can't verify that it's coming just from them.
No, we, we do our own, you know, just a sample, we get some jars or whatever, we send them to our lab, that's what we have, we can tell, but we have not had extensive, you know, testing to see what was coming in.
Is there anything you can, before that line hits the plant, to sample?
That's what we've done, we've done samples that way. We, we picked up some manholes, whatever we've done, we picked up some stuff in some sample bottles, we've sent it off, and it comes in, you know, whatever.
On the freshwater side, they use up to four wells. They have three under their agreement with the city, and we have an understanding that, you know, sometimes we'll use well nine additionally. I don't know the status of those three wells.
Their wells, as I understand, that they've had problems with the wells for the last six or seven months. I don't know what's going on with that, it's their wells, they've been using well nine, which they probably use it 70, 75% of the time, you know, we use it 25% of the time, so they use it way more than we do.
But I'll, I'll just reiterate, they're good community partners, they pay their bills on time, they're very cooperative. This is just an outdated agreement that's, you know, goes back 32 years, 33.
Mr. Gandy, I think you have a question.
No, I'm rolling numbers through my head and trying to figure out what's the best plan of attack on, how you, narrow down the scope here that, you know, we capitalize without losing, if that makes sense.
I would like to bring up some things that, from the past, that we've had conversations. One of the questions that I asked Robert, probably a year and a half ago, I don't know. Is there any benefit to the effluent that they give? Because, an example for everyone that's listening is, if we were getting effluent from the city that was high in something and they were giving us effectively, as Commissioner Tridill is asking, water that is just passing through, it's, it's a lot, it's low solids, low biological oxygen demand, low chemical oxygen, oxygen demand that dilutes the treatment that we have, you know, that would, could be a benefit to the city because overall dilution makes it easier for us to treat. And the answer that you gave me at the time was effectively, no. It does not provide, it is not a, a good, it does not provide any benefit, okay? So we know for a fact that they are under an EPA guidance, they have to pre-treat to a certain level and they provide information based on that. To our knowledge, I'm assuming that we keep watch on that, make sure that they meet those standards, I'm sure EPA makes sure they meet those standards. But we also could take that information and look at the overall and see what that actually, just their requirements versus what we are collecting everywhere else, does that impose any further treatment on in addition to whether there's possible slugs or whatever of something that we don't know? Is there any information in that realm that you could, that you are able to provide?
Not that we have, the only testing we do is what we do, we go out and get, like I said, some samples and turn it to the lab. Other than say, hey, this way extensive, no, don't have anything like that. You know, we just go by what we think it's hot, it comes in with hot one day and we'll send somebody out there, you know, before it's coming in, before our, our stuff gets going early. And then we'll say, okay, that came from this part, can we get it off of that side, their line? They don't get anything from this side, their line comes in a little harder, so that's what we say, okay, we send it off to the lab, they come back and say, okay, it's got whatever it's got in it and try to treat it that way.
So you're saying you can differentiate what's coming from the city and what's coming from?
Yes, sir, just before, yes, sir.
What do you test for in your samples, ECOI nitrates?
I'm sorry, what, what does it test for? We test for nitrates, we test for a little bit of, the metals, a little bit, I mean, you name it, it's, it's in there. It's just, it's just a long chart that says, you know, we can go through this, we test for this, we test. Sometimes the lab will tell us you came in high on this, so we, we test, you know, and then if it is, it's, okay, well, what do we need to do to adjust it this way? You know, air, whatever we're doing and we'll make it work.
And that's not to be confused with the testing we do on the, on the potable water side and for the city. We test all our 17 or 18 wells, and how many sampling stations do we have around town?
We have 30.
30 sampling stations around town. So on the supply side, we're constantly monitoring too.
And we do our lab testing twice a week for the company.
I know that they are aware that this was coming forward.
Yes, sir, and they have this PowerPoint as well.
Right, absolutely. You know, there are some simple, there are quantitative discussions, which you've provided financials on. Then there's qualitative, you know, are, is their product more difficult to treat than what the city would, would normally have flowing there? So if you're talking about 25% or 26.7, whatever it was, percent, then we have to look at it as if our total cost of treatment is a minimum of that for that 27%, not to mention our capacity volume being influenced by that 27%. But is it, for the commission's sake, is it fair to say that we really need to look at some of these and, you know, discuss a reduction? I, I'm talking about reduction in volume or whatever, I just think that this is, and of course, council's gonna be involved in this. This is a time that after 32 years, I really think we need to look at the future and say, okay, how is Lovington's treatment facility gonna be able to continue to absorb growth in the city and still require all of our partners to pay their fair share, because effectively, at this rate, the citizens are paying the load for them to be a partner. And so we need to establish that with them. And I think now that, you know, three years ago, we really didn't even know where we are. So I think it's time that now that we've got sampling going on, we've got qualitative, quantitative, whatever data, I think it's time to present this and bring them to the table and say, okay, here's where we're at.
I have a different direction, just, just passifying. If the, what would it take to pull 27% and manage that through the plant differently? 27, just take 30%, let's just take 30% of the plant, let's just say we separate what they have with a little increase for whatever. And then we leave the rest of the, add math, 70% running through the facility now. I mean, I don't know the operations of how that works as far as the, the plant, how it's built, if there's like stages that it goes through. And then if you could separate out that one stage, it's not having to go through all of those other stages. I mean, am I making any sense at all?
You can't separate it.
Because it only has one path to go through, you would have to come up with a total new system that just managed that, that fluid there.
Basically, another, another wastewater plant, just for, just for that one.